Congratulations Tina, you want me to wait? Chris, you all set now or you want to wait?
Okay.
I have it recorded, written down, so I'll just let Shawna know what occurred before that, sorry.
Okay, okay. Remaining members on the board, congratulations to both Billy and Jeff, welcome to the board. You'll get to learn how to get in and out either by computer or by phone. It's, can be a little complicated. The next one is our supervisory union members. Tina was already on that, I'm on that, Russ, I would like to appoint you to that also.
Okay.
We're still, for the new board members, we're still in the process of straightening out our Act 46 and getting all the school boards and members on the same level of knowledge. Makes it a little difficult for new people coming in because you don't know where we are. You're always welcome to listen or go into the meetings, but you just can't speak or have a vote. But you're more than welcome to attend if you want. And those will come in your email just like this one did.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we need to set our regular meeting schedule. Right now, we meet once a month, the second Monday of the month. We start at 6:00 PM. And depending on what's going on, July, sometimes we don't meet at all, we take that off for family vacations. Last year, it wasn't that difficult, but... Do I have anybody wanting to set the regular schedule of the meetings? I need a motion.
I guess I'll make a motion to leave them as they are currently.
Okay.
One second.
Thank you. So that's the second Monday of the month, starting at 6 o'clock. And we are remote at this time. The governor doesn't want us meeting even with vaccinations going on. Right now, they don't want a large group and it's hard for us to control who comes into an in-person meeting. So for the safety of our students, we are not meeting in person until we're allowed to safely. The next one is... I need a nomination, we usually use the Robert rules for small school or small boards, I need a motion for that.
I motion that we continue using the Roberts Rules of Order for small boards.
Thank you Tina. I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Me, Russ.
Thank you Russ.
Lynette, is this a good time to talk about how the Roberts Rules of Order for small boards says that you do not need to second it?
Tina had brought up, I talked to her the other day, and she says, "Well, according to small boards, you don't need a second on motions." And I knew that, but it's such an ingrained habit that we do not need a second for these motions to go on to the floor. And we can try to remember that Tina, just remind us, just keep saying, "We don't need a second." Otherwise, I automatically say it.
I just figure it'll help the meetings go a little faster for not waiting for that little piece.
Okay, so I have on the floor a motion to use Robert rules for small school boards, all in favor, wave or say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, go on to it. In your packet, you received the Code of Ethics for School Board Members, you all should have seen it, hopefully. Typically, there is a form we sign at the meetings. Each of us, it's kind of hard to do it remotely here. So I'm just gonna individually ask you if you are committed to the VSBA Code of Ethics. I'll start, Russ.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Tina?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Billy?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, and I do too. Is that good enough, Chris? Okay.
Yes, yes, Starlet.
Okay, no problem. Identify the locations where the agenda and the minutes will be posted. I believe they still post them over at Town Hall, and we have them at the school, and they are also on our website. Has anybody run into problems seeing them or getting ahold of them?
I haven't actually tried looking recently, but I did find that sometimes they were, it took a long time for them to get posted.
The agenda or the minutes?
I think more the minutes, but I think part of that is, is that they have to wait till the next meeting.
Right, and then we had, Shawna was sick and out for a while, so we got backed up on some of the the minutes being written up, typed up for approval.
That may have been what that gap was.
Hopefully, that's what it was, yeah, because with the new website now, we should be pretty accurate or on time with those.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The minutes and the agenda and all the stuff for us, when do we normally get that? Because I didn't get my stuff until 2:00 this afternoon. Is that normal?
That very well may have been a glitch only because you're new, Chris, because I've had mine probably since, usually they go out to us the Thursday or Friday before the meeting. Chris, do you know if they went out to Jeff? Billy, did you get yours in time?
I didn't, I got mine from Jeff 30 minutes ago.
Okay.
Alright, so Wendy Bixby had both your email addresses, should have been, your personal email addresses should have emailed it both you at a time, so from now on, you should have a GRCSU email, so all communication will be through there moving forward. So Wendy will send out to the Rutland Town School Board en masse, and so you'll be a part of that, okay? If you don't receive it, obviously, just let me know right away and we'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I do need a motion for the locations as itemized for the postings.
I make a motion to leave them as they are, locations.
Okay, thank you Tina, second.
Sure, even though we don't need one, I'll second it.
Oh geez, you're so good, I thought Tina would give me first. Okay, any discussion, any more discussion? All in favor, aye or thumbs?
Aye.
Thank you, it passes. Oh, got me already. We need to affirm the choice of attorney. We all pretty much use the same attorney for the supervisory union because of the ease of it. Rutland Town has gone ahead and kept him, which is Chris Leopold. We can get our own separate attorney, but it's all up to you. I'll open this up for discussion or nomination.
I'll nominate Chris Leopold to be our attorney.
Thank you Jeff. Do I have a second?
Sure, I'll bite again.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the media source, if something happens or if we post anything, we need to pick a newspaper of choice. We've always only had one newspaper, but does anyone want to make a motion or say who they want?
I'll make a motion for the Rutland Herald.
Okay. I don't need a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we need authorization, a motion to authorize the administration to request and expend available grant funds from the Agency of Education as well as the state and federal funds. Looking for a motion?
I make a motion for the administration to use that money.
Thank you Tina. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I need a motion to authorize the board to borrow funds for district spending, pending receipt of payments from the State Education Fund.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Russ.
You're welcome.
Good thing we got rid of the second because the first is taking forever. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We need a motion to authorize the board chair to sign director's orders and other documents on behalf of the board as necessary.
I make a motion to continue having the chair do that.
Thank you Bill, thank you Tina. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, usually spokesperson for the board is, usually I refer to the superintendent. The board itself is usually the chair. Everyone else, we try to keep from, because the media will call you looking for your opinion and they will say that that's the board's opinion. So typically, when we authorize or affirm a spokesperson, that should be the only person speaking to the media or speaking on behalf of the board. Do I have a motion for that?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Okay, so the super and chair?
Yes, yeah, Chris and yourself.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Go to page two. Finance Committee. Typically, I go through, I have not... I've not gone through and picked committees yet. Finance would be either... Should be Tina or Russ, I know neither of you done, have done this in the past, but, and then I'll take a new board member. Either of you interested in the finance? It only meets once or twice a year at the most, just to let you know.
Sure, I can do it.
Thank you Russ.
I would be interested in that.
Okay Jeff. The negotiations committee, I always serve on that, and I am gonna ask Russ to also serve on the negotiation committee with me. In the past year, two years, it's been Tim and I, but is that okay Russ?
Sure.
Policy Committee. We are currently going through all the policies. We've had some new policies due to the current atmosphere in the United States. So we've had some we've had to change and include wording in. Most, I think, of those we have gotten through, but we are going through the book because it's been anywhere from two to four years since we've looked over the policies. So I do need to, to serve on the policy committee. The committee did stop. Pardon you, Woodbill?
Yeah.
Okay. We did stop, so there's nothing we're considering right now, so the next meeting would be brand-new policies the committee hasn't looked at yet. Anyone else interested in serving with Bill? I'm trying to give everybody a chance.
I'd be interested in doing that.
Okay Jeff, okay. The Hiring Committee, that is Tina, she has always been on that. And thank you Tina for going along with the associate principals' hiring. I know Bill, you're on it. Enjoy your freedom. Typically, we will never have two board meetings on, or two board members on that committee. I know that you-
I applied, I applied ahead of time.
I thought so as a parent, and that's why I talked to Sarah and we left you on. Just always, all board members, keep in mind that we cannot have three people at a meeting unless it's warned. Because three school board members could actually say something or make a motion or promise something, and that makes the entire board liable for that. So again, even if you see where you can listen into some of these meetings, that there should be only one, be extremely careful. And Chris and Sarah, Deb, just if you should see a third member pop up, just delete them or silence them or whatever you do to them, so we don't run into that problem, okay? The next thing, I think that takes care of everything on the committees.
So, excuse me, so on the committees, so Tina and Billy are gonna be the ones, if there's any other positions available?
No. What do you mean, for what?
Well, they're doing the, they're doing the assistant principal.
Tina, Tina is the assigned from the board.
Right.
Bill is in it as a parent, a community member. He signed up for that before he actually became a school board member. Typically, right, typically, he wouldn't be on it.
Okay, so I'm just saying, if there's another, more positions that need to be filled?
Okay, hiring? Hiring, that would be Tina.
Okay.
Tina has been, yeah, even before the board, it doesn't have to be a board member, but even before Tina got on the board, she was regularly one of the for the interviews, and she's very good at asking the right questions to get the right answers. So, yeah, that's one of the reasons I kept Tina on, because she does such a great job. If for some reason Tina cannot do it, okay, I may reach out to one of you and see if you're interested in serving on it, okay?
Thank you for your kind words.
Do I need a second for that one?
I don't think so.
Okay, we're going to go on to approval of the agenda. For the new board members, what it is, is you have a chance to look at the agenda. Sometimes we will move sections around, say for finance, if Lewis is on, sometimes we try to get him on earlier so he doesn't have to stay through the whole meeting. I do not see anything on here that we need to change. Anybody else Tina, Russ? Okay. This is a longer meeting than normal, and mainly because of the policies. Okay, moving on, I need a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, teacher, staff, and community comments. Now, this may take a minute, we have 23 people online right now, including us. Is there anyone that has any questions for the board, superintendent or principals? And of course, those on the phone, you're just gonna have to speak up because we can't tell.
Lynn, I raised my hand, but I don't know-
I just got that.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
Okay, good evening everyone. So my question was, as you guys were going through those committees Lynn, I was just curious to know, like, how do you decide, like, who gets appointed to them? Like, I don't know, is that the chair's responsibility to say, like, you know, Russ is gonna be on this, Tina's on this, Jeff's on this, Billy's on this? Or is it more like a motion? I was just curious.
Yep, nope, usually the chair appoints.
Okay, I've never, I don't think I've ever seen that happen before, so that's why I was just kind of curious to know how that went.
Come on Marcia, after all these years.
I know, seriously, I don't remember that, so, but thank you for entertaining my question, thanks.
No problem, anytime. Anyone else have any questions? Not seeing any hands, not seeing anybody speak up, we'll move on. Finance discussion and action. Is Louis on?
Yes, I am.
Hi Louis, let me introduce you to our finance expert, this is Louis Malazo. If you have any questions or anything, after you go through myself or Chris, he's the one that has all the knowledge.
Good evening everyone.
Nice to meet you Louis.
Good evening.
Hello.
So the only thing I have on the agenda tonight is approve the CRF sub-grant. So this is not a new sub-grant, it's just cleaning up the paperwork for the CRF funds that we received through the feds. So we received this grant back in the spring. And the grant came to the SU, but just for ease of accounting, we've decided, we decided back then to sub-grant some of the funds to each of the individual districts. So since March, schools have been spending the COVID funds for local subs, maintenance, supplies, instructional supplies, stuff like that, and so now we've just working on cleaning up all the paperwork. We've submitted for reimbursement from the state, so we're just tying up all the loose ends. So when money comes to the SU and then gets sub-granted to the local districts, we have to have sub-grant paperwork in place and just formalize having the boards approve that, those. So you'll see this at each of the districts and you'll see this at the SU. And then, once it's approved, we'll just be looking for the chair to sign it and just to have it on record in our files.
And for the new board members, that saved all of us, the whole district supervisory union, that has saved us tremendously last year for all of our COVID expenses.
So the sub-grant wasn't in the packet, it's for $48,000.
Do I have a motion to approve the CRF sub-grant agreement?
I give a motion to approve that agreement.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Louis or any questions at all?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Louis, this is Jeff Klon, how much of that money was given to Rutland Town School? And do we know what it was spent on?
So the full $48,000 of the sub-grant was for Rutland Town School. So we received a total of about $800,000 in CRF funds at the SU level. Much of that was spent at the SU, but then individual amounts were given to each of the local districts. So Rutland Town used theirs for, like I said, each local subs, so each school got to hire a local sub to have as a floater to cover unexpected absences. They also used it for a floating Kelly sub, again, to cover absences due to COVID that were unexpected. It was used for social distancing supplies like Plexiglas, anything, cleaning supplies, PPE, instructional supplies related to remote learning, a lot of technology supplies to buy Chromebooks, smart boards, anything that's needed for remote learning. I do have specifics and I could provide that in the, specific amounts per item or per category, if you want, I could provide that at one of the future meetings.
I would appreciate that, because I think a lot of that money should have gone right to air quality, but that's, that's just me.
So the schools were able to get money for air quality directly through Efficiency Vermont, and Rutland Town did have Efficiency Vermont come in and do an air quality test, and they did get some money through that program directly through Efficiency Vermont. And that was a separate, that was a separate pot of money, not directly through these COVID funds.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you Louis. Any more questions on the sub-grant? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda, the new members probably did not get it. The director's orders, they will, they will come through your emails and they'll say warrants on them. So it's not the typical use of the word warrant, I know it threw me for a loop for a while. So when you see warrants, that is the, our expenditures that have been, or checks that have been signed. Typically, the chair in their absence, vice chair, will look them over and approve them. The reason we do it this way is so that we don't get any penalties for being late on payments. So, and then at this time, at the next board meeting, say this one, if anyone had a question on them, they could have contacted Louis or the board chair. Then we go ahead and we approve them. Do I have a motion to approve the warrants that came through?
I'll make a motion to approve them, but I did have a quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
Since I'm now the vice chair, how do I know that you weren't able to sign them, if I'm supposed to sign them?
Kathy will let me, especially right now, because we're not, we're not in person, you can go in and sign them. Typically, I get back to her within 15 to 30 minutes at the latest. So if you sign them, she would send me an email saying they've already been approved by Tina, and that's fine. Okay, and you'll know when I'm not around, I'll make sure I keep you informed, because on my absence, you would be the acting chair.
And how do you, you said that you don't go in to sign them, so how do you sign them?
I just give her permission by email and then she has that proof that I said, "Go ahead and pay them." Sometimes, if there's other paperwork there for me to sign, contracts or anything, then I will sign when I'm there. Typically, just like the school, we're trying to keep it to zero contact with other people at this time. That's why, unless you're going in as a parent on a scheduled visit to a specific person at the school, you do not go to the school, just like the parents and residents have been told. No one's allowed in unless previously authorized, just for the safety of the students. So you can, you can go, and she'll give you that choice when you see the warrants, and in fact, when you've seen them in the past. She usually just sends me a thing saying, "Do you have any questions, do you approve them?" And you will find, going through them, and if you read them carefully, all of the board members, you'll see that the vast majority of them are occurring currently, or consistently, so you know. Usually, if there's a question, it's just something all of a sudden pops out, and what the heck was that? I don't remember paying or authorizing that kind of money for something. But very seldom is there any questions on them. Our finance staff is awesome, they really are.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Any more questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you all. We have the minutes, Russ and Tina, from the last meeting, February 8th. Did you have any additions, deletions, questions on them?
No.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Thank you Tina. Any questions from anyone else, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And also, Russ and Tina, you'll see that we have a set of the meetings from the Carousel Board Meeting for the new members, just to let you know that was regarding negotiations, and the carousel meeting is when all members visit the SU site for something big. I think this is only the second carousel we've ever had, because we can't do it in person and it was rather time-sensitive that we did it. Russ or Tina, do you have any questions about those minutes?
No.
Or do not?
Okay, any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Thank you Russ. Any discussion from anybody on the carousel meetings? All in favor?
Aye.
And I guess now that I'm going down through all this and asking for motions, Jeff, I know you came in on Tuesday morning, Billy, you got sworn in also?
I have not. I made, I made an appointment, and when I went there, the person who does that wasn't there, so I'm going tomorrow at 4:00.
Okay, I don't think I had you down for any motions yet anyway, so just to let you know, until you get sworn in, you can't make a motion, okay? Or vote, but there's been nothing that has affected that yet. Superintendent's report, Chris?
Thanks, Starlet. Just have a couple items, I know it's a long meeting, so I'll keep it-
it real to the short. Uh, so first of all, I'd just like to uh say congratulations to Tina on her reelection, and also welcome to Billy and Jeff. I look forward to working with all of you. I also just want to say thanks to the community members of Rutland Town for passing the budgets. Uh, you know, it's it's great to continue to support the schools and we look forward to working with you in the future. Uh, the past few weeks, we have been finishing up on, obviously with the getting things ready for the town meeting and the budget votes. Uh, we had the Rutland Town meeting on the first, we had a presentation, uh which was myself, Louis, and then Debbie and Sarah all presented. Uh, it was, uh it was well attended compared, relatively speaking, compared to some of the other uh districts in the SU. Uh, so it was good to see the people out, we had some good questions. Um, the next round of COVID testing is going to take place this Wednesday on the tenth. Uh, so when we have information, I will release that and uh probably in the April Board Meeting for you. We did find out this morning about the vaccinations for our GRCSU school employees. I know that the staff had been eagerly waiting uh the the arrival of the codes. I received a lot of emails over the weekend. Uh, just wanted to assure people I was not holding them back. Uh, we were waiting for the state to release them, so uh this afternoon, uh state provided us with codes and we have two dates set up, uh the uh March fifteenth, which I do uh remember seriously correct that it will be with the Pfizer uh vaccine, and then the twenty-second of March will be the Johnson-Johnson vaccine, and the uh these, the vaccines not be uh provided onsite. Uh, staff members will have to go to the Holly Inn uh in Rutland uh to receive their vaccines, and the hours I do believe are two to eight. Uh, so I I have heard some issues with people just logging in, there's more about the pre-registration process, um it's a little bit different than the uh the testing that they are previous such, previously signed up for. So hopefully we'll uh get everybody needs the vaccine, uh the vaccine, so. Uh, and then lastly, I just put in the uh in, you know, the legislative updates. I had a good conversation this morning with other regional superintendents and our uh local senators and representatives, just to discuss uh some items that are currently on the floor. Uh, but uh, so I provided you with that, uh it's some light reading. It gives, kind of gives you an idea what's going on right now, and I think it's the second of the legislative update, and and Billy and Jeff, I know that you get the first one, and so if you want, I can send that first one to you as well, so you can see, you know, just kind of where things are at. Uh, then when we have the third and final, which we had to close of the session, I will send that out to you as well. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's it, Chris?
That's it for tonight.
Chris, in your report, um you had mentioned that both Jeff and Billy had three-year terms. Is that true?
That's what was, that's what was presented to me, so we can, we can change that, so. I said, I'm just going with the clerks that shared with me.
Yeah, mine's a two-year term, Chris.
Right.
Yep. Yep.
And then my other question is, in the legislative report, it mentioned that they're trying to do a um statewide school calendar. Is, do you have any idea what that looks like and how that will affect us trying to finalize our school calendar for next year?
No, uh, it won't impact our school calendar for next year. Uh, we are, we've already have our school calendars somewhat set, we're in the drafting stages. If that's something that will occur, it'll be for future years, but next year's school calendar, uh we should be presented to the boards in April, uh for to take a look at, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, yep.
Any other questions for Chris? Co-principals.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Sarah.
Just, I'll start off with some, some uh kid things, and then Debbie will give an update on building matters. Um, I just want to thank everybody, especially community members, for continuing to support our school and passing our school budget. Um, very much appreciated. Uh, so for our remote students, we're down to about eight percent right now. Um, and Debbie and I, over the weekend, we received a handful of emails from parents, um even more parents that want to send their, their children back to in-person learning. So we're really excited about that, to get more kids into the building, and we just encourage families that are considering sending their kids back to in-person to please reach out to us. Um, they can come back at any time. Um, our second graders for the month of February, they created, um, they wrote some Valentines for essential workers. Uh, we have a picture in our board report with our fifth grade students who constructed snow snakes, and they raced them down for their ingenious peop- ingenious, I can't talk tonight, People's Unit. Um, Ms. Keith Faber is joining us this evening, and her and Mr. Huscock, actually Colby is as well, um, uh, were the ones doing that with our fifth graders. Um, Mrs. Mullins' fourth grade class um is creating uh a news that they uh have now posted on Peg TV, so the dates are listed there for those of you that want to watch that. We were so happy to celebrate our hundredth day of school. We had a lot of fun activities um that teachers did with their kids. Our new um outdoor scoreboard arrived, so that will be installed this spring. Um, and February twenty-second, we were able to get our live stream up for our athletic games, so a huge thanks to Mike Rowe, Kelly Trae, and Neil Dobbs for getting that set up for us.
Hi, everyone. And then on building matters, the skating rink was very, very popular over February break. We had a lot of students um uh and their families uh enjoying that, and we'd like to thank Mr. Trae and Mr. Ray for all their hard work keeping the ice clean. Every time it snowed, it was like, oh no, and they went out and cleaned it off, so it was a big job. Um, Mr. Trae and Mr. Rowe also, over February break, built new uh locker cubbies in both the boys' and the girls' locker room, and there's a photo there. They're beautiful, the kids really like them. We're gonna put some places to put their names on them so that during basketball games, they feel kind of special in their home, in their home locker rooms. Um, we've received four new interactive panels that are going to be installed starting on Wednesday, and some of our Wi-Fi access points have been upgraded as well. And we've also installed a phone in the cafeteria so that we have that for emergency notification purposes and for tapestry as well. So that's where we are with the building. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, this is Jeff. Um, when I saw the locker rooms, um, what's gonna happen when kids are in there changing? There's now an open concept in there, and there's no privacy for kids when they're changing for gym?
Actually, in the girls' room, there, there are the old shower stalls that have curtains that they can go in and change in there if they so choose. And in the boys' locker room, there's also the old shower that's available for that as well.
Well, we lost some of the, lost some of the privacy with all that, that's.
Okay, Deb. Thank you very much. Um, we'll go ahead.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll go ahead and move on. The next is our contract recommendations. I believe you got that, that may have come in really late today. Um, let me find it here. We don't have any recommendations, do we? Chris? I think we only have our resignations and leave of absence.
Correct.
Okay.
In the packet, yep.
Okay. So.
I, I have in my materials, Lynette, a whole page of contract recommendations.
Yes.
Is, is that what you need to look at?
Yep, that's what I was looking for. I was thinking I had one somewhere.
It's a two-page document stapled.
Yeah, I know. I need a bigger desk.
There it is.
Find it?
Yep. These are just uh recommendations of the board approves that we can uh set out contracts uh by April.
Are there any, um besides the movement with the new contract, um there's no one that moved in as far as on lines or anything? This is pretty straightforward, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the teachers' contracts as listed?
I make a motion to approve their contracts as listed.
Thank you, Tina. Any discussion? All in favor? Hmm? Thank you. Okay, resignations, um.
We have two. Uh, I emailed, I just received one uh during the meeting, because the meeting's not going very well, but um, so I emailed that to all of you, so you have a copy of that letter.
So in your packet, you should have two. One is for resignation, and this one came from, if I can read it, Karen Reynolds. And the other one, resignation is Karen, oh Karen Rhodes, I'm sorry, um ma- our math interventionalist, and there, are you including the one-year contract expiring? I thought I had printed the other one out, but I don't see it here, Chris.
No.
Sweet. Okay, so we got Karen Rhodes, and who is the second one?
The second one was Arlie Swayze, school counselor.
Okay. So they will be both leaving at the end of the year. Do I have a motion to approve their resignations?
I'll make the motion to approve their resignations.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I take it we're gonna get right on the ball and try to find replacements, right, Chris?
Uh, we will be posting tomorrow.
Thank you. And what did you want to do with the one-year contract that's expiring?
I would just more for your information that.
Information, okay.
Rights.
Okay, no problem. Also, in your packet, we have got a leave of absence request. So we have one teacher that did that, did um different circumstances. Of course, we can't discuss the reasons, but um what it is, is this teacher is asking, um gonna go through the school year, um this school year, then would take time and some, a lot of time that's given to her. Um, and then she's asking for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to be on an unpaid leave, um and then return back in August of twenty-two. Um, this meets all the criteria. Um, there really is not a reason we can't or we won't um do it, so that would leave us hiring someone for a kindergarten position for just one year, twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, do I have a motion to accept her request?
I make a motion to accept her request.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I think that takes care of all of them, right, Chris?
Yes.
Okay. My report, I don't have anything, um, because it's a, you know, brand-new start of the year. You did receive some board responsibilities, um, what the board is actually able to do. Sometimes when we have board members come on, they think they have more power and say than they do. Um, no one person has any say. You cannot speak on behalf of the board. Um, it has to go through the board and it has to be not unanimously, but um approved by a majority before you can um do anything. Just reminding people that student names, teachers' names, staff names are never to come out in the regular meetings. Um, we keep a very positive outlook on things. If there is a problem, you are to reach out to myself or the superintendent. Um, you, things that you might want to talk about or see on the agenda, get ahold of me, and I'll pass it by Chris, um, and get back to you and let you know when they will appear. Um, hopefully, when we'll get back to in-person again shortly or soon, well, probably won't be this year, but, um, so we can start getting the teachers and the students back at our meetings and giving our presentations on what they've been working on and what they've been doing. Um, that's one of the rewards for us. Um, just keep in mind, all board members, you're here to make sure the students get a great education, that they stay safe. Um, if you always keep in mind that the school is your number-one priority, and the kids' safety and their education, no one will ever run into trouble. Um, I do, I don't know if I congratulated you, but welcome both of you. Um, I know, Billy, you've run or put in to be on the school board. I think this is your third time, isn't it?
Yeah.
You made it. Now, I don't want you.
I'm really appreciative of the opportunity, and since I see him on the call, Tim, thank you for all the work that you've done.
So.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, welcome aboard, and if you have any um questions, don't feel, um, I, yeah, I don't know how to get the names. Um, I guess I'll have to have Sarah or Chris send you our email addresses, telephone numbers in case you need to get in touch. Um, I just, we don't want anybody to put it out into the community tonight. Um, but, and that made it a little difficult tonight to get hold of Bill and Jeff on the communications problem because we didn't have your information. Uh, but we'll do that, but just don't ever be afraid to call uh myself, and if it needs to go to Chris's level, then I'll do that too.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me, you two?
Uh, Lynette?
Yeah.
I would like, I would like to set up a, a meeting with you um to discuss some things. Is that possible?
It is, it won't be in person.
Oh, sure.
Um, but you're, you're more than welcome to call me. Um, most afternoons, I don't do, have anything to do. Even in the mornings, you can call. Um, sometimes I'm at town hall working, um, but um, you can always give me a call in the afternoons. I'm not sure if you have my number.
No, I don't.
Okay, you will shortly. We'll send that, we'll make sure that's put out there. Can you do that, Sarah? Can you do that?
Yes, I'll text him your number right now. I'll text you, Jeff, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll email out, out also. Um, speaking of email, um, just be very careful. Again, the three-member discussions at the same time warrants the same problem. It's a majority meeting. So if you want to talk one-on-one with someone, you're fine. You just cannot have that third party involved, um, because you don't want to run into a conflict and having a majority of the school board discussing something. Um, you never want to make decisions ahead of time. Um, uh, otherwise, you know, it it just causes all kinds of problems. It's not upfront, it's not the honest and ethical way things to do. Um, we did run into that problem a few years ago. Um, not that we got called on it, but we had some members that just, it, it is the easiest way. If you're gonna discuss the same thing, it's easier to tell everybody at the same time, but unfortunately, we cannot do that. Chris, can you think of anything to add?
At this time, I I will be set up uh an opportunity for myself to meet with Billy and Jeff just separately, just kind of talk about some things and uh get them set up. I did reach out to Wendy and Neil during the meeting, and you both should have your emails ready to go. Uh, if you still have a problem, just contact me first thing in the morning, and I'll make sure you guys everything though, because uh all communication will be through our GRCSU emails, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
And once again, welcome.
Okay, we're going on to the policies. Um, these are, there's only one that is the second reading, I think, correct?
Uh, we have three, C four, F thirteen, and then the electronic communications.
Okay. So it's the Board and Superintendent Relationship Policy that has already been through our board and out to the community one time. We usually do these twice. The second one is the Harassment, Hazing, and Bullying Prevention of Students Policy, and um the electronic, yep, the electronic communications between employees and students. What happens is, once the policy committees meet, they get the policies down to what they all believe um represents all the schools. There are seven schools, but there are three districts. And it, it goes very well. I mean, we're all in this battle for the same things, um, but some people have extra problems that they have to make sure that their bases are covered in. Um, so by the time they come to the board, they have already been approved by the policy committee. Um, and then each board has to approve the, the policies, and then it would, in fact, become um into the policy manual having passed. And then it would in fact become, um, into the policy manual having passed. So tonight, um, we do need to act on the three policies because this is their second meeting. One is again, board and superintendent relations. The other is harassment, hazing, and bullying prevention of students. And the third is the electronic communications between employees and students. Do I have a motion to approve those three?
I'll make a motion to approve all three new policies.
Thank you, Tina. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Okay. Now, also, we have four policies that you should have had in your emails. Um, that this will be their first reading or first review for the board. Uh, one is the Title I, um, parent involvement policy. There are two, I believe, yep, appendix attached to that. There is the alcohol and drug-free workplace. Then there's the alcohol and drug testing of transportation employees. And then the student alcohol and drug use policy. So if you want to take those home, this is the first reading. Community members, if you, um, would like to see these, you can always contact one of us or superintendent or principals. And at the next meeting, these will come up for the second reading and approval or changes if you have recommendations. Questions on that?
Well, I just want to add that I, I just sent out D6, which is, it's a very short, it's the drug and alcohol testing of transportation employees. Uh, Wendy, Wendy did not include it in the packet, or at least it wasn't in my packet, so I just sent it out.
Okay, it is in mine, so.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, no problem.
Perfect.
I was afraid you snuck another one in on me.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure we had.
Okay, no problem. Okay, um, so moving on, old business. Tina Russ, any old business?
Nope.
Any new business? I don't think we have any right now. We were kind of waiting for the elections.
Oh, actually, I did have some old business.
Sure, what is it?
When I was looking through the, um, payment, I don't know what you call them, but.
Financial sheets.
Yeah, the financial sheets. Um, I noticed that there was a, um, I think it was 5,000 for transportation for athletics. And I was curious what that was meant for. Because as, as far as I know, there wasn't transportation for athletics.
Right, we haven't done any, um, transportation. Sarah, do you know if that got put in back when, um, Matt was mentioning it? He had wanted to do it. Um, but then of course COVID hit. So I wasn't sure. If you want to look into the amount, um, Tina was at that meeting also, but I don't remember. Russ, I don't remember saying, put it in the budget. I'm not for sure that's what it's for. I mean, because you've got the other 8,000 stipend for, um, class trips um, for the little guys. Um, and of course, all of that has been carried over because none of this occurred last year. Mike Rowe, are you on still?
I don't see him. Louis is.
Yeah, Louis just joined us again. I asked him to come back. So Tina, if you want to ask a question again, Louis might be able to answer that for you.
Oh, sure. Um, I was noticing that there was a $5,000 line item in athletics for transportation. And I was just curious what that was, like the intent of that was supposed to be used for.
That would be for busing to games.
So that's something that we could look at doing at some point? Is that the, the right amount for that?
I'm not sure if we ever got an accurate figure. Um, I'm trying to recall that meeting. I know that Matt had wanted it. Of course, there's a lot of parents out there because the kids have to go to these out-of-town trips. Most parents are still working. We got into the discussion. I remember, um, we talked about, well, that's fine getting the kids there. Um, but then we kind of ran into a problem with, um, I don't think the majority of the board made a decision on what to do with the returning trip. So if we hire a bus to take our kids to these games out of town or, you know, then all the kids are there, we have to pay for the bus and the bus driver for the hour, hours they wait. And then we have to turn around and I said, then they bring them back. And the discussion was, well, no, the parents want to take them because then they need to eat. And the parents don't want them riding the bus back because they don't want to go up to the school. So, um, exactly how this was going to work, because if we have a bus that takes them, there's a child that does not have a parent able to be at the games or be at the games and bring their child back. Do we pay for a full bus for one or two students? Um, whose responsibility is it going to be to make sure all the students have a ride home? Or do we just make it mandatory, if you go on the bus, you have to come back on the bus? Um, and I don't think we ever came to a solution with that. Um, do you remember, Sarah or Deb?
I don't think we did come to a resolution on that. I know that when I was principal at Proctor High School, I spent a lot of time writing notes for students not to ride home on the bus and to go home with their parents. So I spent signing, a lot of time signing. And we very, very rarely had a, a full bus coming home.
Right, and I understand that, but I, my, my fear again is always the students. We're gonna, parents are gonna leave, bus is gonna leave, and I've got little Joey standing there waiting. So, um, that's my biggest fear is to make sure that all the students, all the kids are accounted for. So we will, Chris, if you want, we'll, uh, put that on a future agenda. It's not going to be an issue for this year, but a future agenda and we'll all talk about that and come to a resolution.
Sure.
Thank you. Any more discussion or question? Whoops, sorry.
It would probably make sense to have Mike Rowe, the athletic director, available for that meeting just so that he, he can probably best answer the questions regarding transportation.
Definitely, definitely. I don't know.
I was just going to say, I think this year would have been perfect because there's no spectators. So the parents weren't able to go to the games, so it was really complicated. It's a shame that we weren't able to use that, at least this year. In some way.
Yeah, I mean, and of course, we didn't know when they were going to start and.
So I, maybe we should make sure we talk about it at our next meeting to see if it's something that we should discuss for the spring sport of any sort.
We can, we can, we can put it on the agenda for next meeting. Is that okay, Russ?
Yeah, I think, I think it makes sense because I.
It does make sense, but.
It's a, it's a difficult, it's a difficult thing. Um, but I also, Lynette, understand where you're coming from in terms of little Johnny being, being left behind and Deborah Anderson, where you're coming from about signing slips for mixed.
Yeah, I don't care about that, but.
I guess to be politically correct, I should have said little Johnny or little Jamie, but y'all know where I'm coming from. Leave anybody behind.
Okay, so I'll, I'll let Mike know to be at the next meeting as well.
Thank you, thank you. Russ? Anymore?
Nope, all set. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, our next meeting will be the second Monday, will be April 12th at 6:00 PM. Um, and the two new guys, just play with your computers or whatever. See if you can get the volumes to work. Um, believe me, they'll tell you, I hang up on myself more times than I don't. So if you ever see me pop out and pop back in, that's because I hit the wrong button. Um, but, um, I do not believe we need executive session for anything, do we, Chris?
Not tonight, no.
Okay. And, um, yeah, and there is, of course, I think you've got in your packet that you guys got is executive session, how they're handled. Of course, anything said in executive session stays just with the people that were in executive session. Um, you never bring it outside.
Can I just make one thing? Uh, you have, our next board meeting is over our April break.
Oh, you.
Did you notice that, Chris? Yes, I might.
You guys get a break?
You might, you might need one.
Okay, um, I will leave it up to the board if you want to look at your calendars. Um, and we can either move it up a week, I think the third week. Don't you have another school board meeting, Chris?
I probably will have the Quarry Valley, uh, on that Monday, so.
Okay, okay, so the first week would be open?
Is that the fifth?
Yes.
Works for me.
I'm away that day.
Works for me.
In Florida. Sorry.
No, you're not.
For me.
I, I can try to log on a little bit, but I won't probably be able to attend the whole time. It's my last night there before I come home.
Oh, I, I was thinking maybe you were just by the pool having a toddy and you just didn't want to.
No, my sister's getting married, so.
Oh, nice.
All right.
Okay, um, Chris, I don't know if you've got your calendar up.
I do.
Because I always forget who meets on when, so it doesn't necessarily have to be a Monday meeting.
If we want, uh, you know, if we want to push it back to, uh, the 20th on a Tuesday, I could do that. I don't know how you feel about that.
Um.
For the week after break.
Yep.
That works for me.
Yeah, it works for me.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Okay, so we'll plan our next meeting for April 20th. And I can make that one. I couldn't make the 21st, but I finally get to see my daughter after a year.
Oh, nice.
I know, I'm just so excited. Um, so we'll meet on April 20th at 6:00 PM. And I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion. April 20th, 6:00 PM.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you.
And a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
I got one question. Can I ask a question?
Um, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I've had a couple of different people call me about graduation.
Okay, yep.
Is there a committee? Is there somebody in charge of all that? What's?
Now, right now, um, we can discuss it typically that is addressed by superintendent and principals. It doesn't really come to the board. So, so we wouldn't have Sarah.
I'm sorry, Lynette.
I would just, if any, excuse me, Jeff, any community members reaches out to you, if you could just refer them to me or Debbie.
Okay, good.
Because we're, yeah, we're already talking about graduation, um.
Yeah, I heard, yeah, I heard that, yeah.
Yep, so just anybody that has any, um, questions, just chain of command, just say, gives, gives Sarah or Debbie a call at the school.
Is Sarah, is there, is there, is there a committee or anything with that or?
No, we, we do what we always do and that's with our seventh, our middle school teachers, the seventh and eighth grade team.
Yeah.
Um, and then I know there's been parents that have reached out offering to help, um, if needed, but we're, uh, we're, we have a couple of things that were options that we're considering right now, but again, any parent, just send them right to me.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks.
And that goes with any, just about any article or issue. Chris, you have something?
I'd just say, we could put that on the agenda, just give an update the next, or maybe in April if you want.
Um, I have had a couple of people ask about the last day of school. Um, of course, it's a little early, but, um, we could discuss that. Or just, if you want to just advise us where it is.
Yep, that's not a problem.
Okay, Russ, you had the floor. You were going to make a motion for adjournment, or was that, no, Tina did.
Yeah, I think it was Tina.
You can go ahead, Russ.
Either, either or. I'll, I'll, I'll second it.
Hey, any questions on the adjournment? Usually this is the quickest motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you guys have a good month. We'll see you next month.
Take care, Lynette.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.